Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, July 27, 2022. I call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a quick announcement. There's two opportunities for public comment tonight. Anybody that would like to speak under public comment should sign up on the sheets on the back table. The first opportunity is public comment on agenda items only, and the second opportunity for public comment will be at the end of the meeting, and that's an open comment. In any case, I will ask you for your name and address for the record, and we'll follow our normal protocols for public comment, which is around three minutes, and then I'll probably wave you off. Nothing on the list for public comment for agenda items? Great. So we'll move into our business, and the first piece of business is approval of the minutes. Paula?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request the minutes.
Can you turn your mic on? There you go.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request the minutes of June, excuse, yes, June 22nd to be approved by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Paula. Accounts payable? Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for July 13, 2022. Total, all funds, $1,908,462. And I have the bills list for July 27, 2022. Total, all funds, $1,069,357.60.
Thanks, Kim. I'll accept a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have one item of new business this evening. It's consider a resolution authorizing the township manager to execute documents in reference to Phase Two of sidewalk improvements in Richborough. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Following a successful Phase One of the Richborough Sidewalk Project, which was completed earlier this year, the administration is recommending the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority Department of Community Economic Development for Phase Two of the Richborough Sidewalk Project. If I may make a motion?
Please.
I moved to adopt Resolution R-22-13 authorizing the township manager to file a grant application with the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority Department of Community Economic Development Multi-Model Transportation Fund Program to construct sidewalks identified in Phase Two in the village of Richborough, and to authorize the township manager to execute all documents and agreements required by the grant program.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further comment, Bob?
I think it's fairly self-explanatory. It's a continuation of what we've already been doing, and obviously I suggest we move forward.
Thanks, Bob. Kim?
I think any time we're applying for money to improve our community, it's always a good thing.
Agreed. Paula?
Yes, I'm very happy about this.
I think the sidewalks look great in Richborough.
Great.
Yeah, I'm in favor also. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're going to move right into liaison reports. Start out with Dr. Rose.
Okay. First thing, I would like to say that I wanted to congratulate Giant Supermarket on July 1st, all the supervisors who were here. We were present for the grand opening. It was a wonderful event, and we wish them the best of luck, and I think it's going to be quite a great thing for our community. The other thing I would like to talk about is we had a food drive here in Northampton over the last few weeks, and, excuse me, what we did in the township is we had all our departments compete against each other to get as much money and as much food as we can for Jesus-focused ministry. In these times, we have people right in our community who, through, maybe they have a health problem or have a job, lose a job, and are not making ends meet. We're making sure that our residents are getting the food that they need. And I do want to say I want to thank the fire company for filling a truck last, a couple weeks ago. And I do want to say that we were all, we had a lot of friendly competition here. All the supervisors competed to who could bring the most food and the most money together. And I would like to say that Bob Salsar, he won. He did the best. And it was, like I said, it was a, it was a great thing. Everybody came together, and we worked really hard. And Bill, you don't have the number?
5,000 pounds.
5,000 pounds of food to our local food pantry. So I think it's pretty, we should, we have a lot to be proud of, and it just shows how grateful our township is and how much we care about the people in our community. All right. Next on to the senior center. July continues to be a very busy month for the senior center. This past Monday, we had a second event in the 300th anniversary, and the program took us back into a time when women used flax and other materials to turn it into yarn to make clothes. I was completely impressed by this, since I can't even sew a button, and it was, it was, they, they had original tools, and it was really very, very interesting. So I, you know, the center has had a great day of special 300th anniversaries planned for Saturday, September 24th as well. I know Paula will probably be reporting on that. But just remember, if you are age 55 or better, now's a perfect time to join the senior center. The membership year runs July through June and is only $25 a year. The opportunities are endless for socialization, participation in activities, educational programs, and day trips. The center provides a wonderful support system to keep people active, vital, independent, and living longer. And during this hot weather, it's a great place to come and cool off. Now on to Parks and Rec. Summer is in full swing, and Parks and Rec is hitting a grand slam with all that is being offered. It's been reported that our campers are having a great time. However, if you, if you still need something for your kids to do, it's not too late to sign up for a week-long camp. Specialty camps are offered throughout the summer up until the last week in August. Upcoming camps include archery, art, basketball, soccer, chess, cooking, science experiments, tennis, and TV hosting and anchoring. How cool is that? If you're looking for a great way for your child to spend a week doing what they love, visit the Park and Rec's website at www.northamptonrec.com, or call the office at 215-357-6800, extension 243. Another great summer tradition for, here in Northampton, is our Thursday night summer concerts. Enjoy a variety of free outdoor concerts at the amphitheater in the municipal park on Thursday evenings at 7:00 through August 4th. Join us tomorrow, July 28th. We, we're going to feature Southern Edge, a versatile five-piece band playing southern rock, country, and classic favorites. The season finishes off on August 4th with the greatest and best tunes from the fabulous Grease Band. This finale to the concert series is something you won't want to miss, so gather your family and friends for a night of music in the park. In the event of inclement weather, concerts will be held indoor the same night at Maureen Welsh School Gym. Now, do you know that Parks and Rec offers discounted tickets to a variety of places? Some of the tickets available include Adventure Aquarium in Camden, Baltimore Aquarium, Maurice Pier, Splash Zone in Wildwood, Six Flags Great Adventure, Sesame Place, Knobbles, and the Franklin Institute. Some tickets are available online, while others still require you to stop by the Parks and Rec Department in the Township Building. Feel free to call the office or go online for more details. After summer fun, we know that school is just around the corner. Sorry, kids. Northampton Township Preschool Potpourri Program, a state-certified program which starts right after Labor Day, is just about fall, so if you might be interested, don't delay. This longstanding, highly-regarded program will not only help your young child learn and reinforce recognition of numbers, letter shapes, colors, and self-awareness, but give them hours of fun. Our fall recreation brochure will be finding a way to your mailbox at the end of the, at the end of August. And as always, our programs will be online before the release of the new brochure. I also, I forgot to thank all our residents, too. So many residents, besides coming out for the fire truck, also brought stuff to the library, to the senior center. They came to our summer concerts, they brought food with them, they donated money. I have to say, Northampton is pretty darn terrific, and we really love to give. So that's all I have for today.
Thanks, Kim. Paula, you're up.
Hi, yeah, Kim, thank you. That was great. Northampton is the greatest township, I believe. During the summer months, the library and the VAC, the Veterans Advisory Commission, have not met, so I do not have a report for them, but we continue to celebrate 300 years here in Northampton. They've been working hard. They're, they have display, they set up display boards along the path, paths, all the paths in the municipal park. If you want to go over there and take a look at some of the history that is displayed there, it's good stuff. Tickets for Friday Fun Fest is, that's being held on September 23rd at the Civic Center Basin are on sale now. Bring your family, your friends, a blanket and a chair, and you can hear great music, enjoy the craft brews, beer, other kinds of food will be there, and lots of vendors. And then also, there'll be games for all to play. We're going to celebrate our community with all the residents that we can, and check out northhampton township dot com for more information on what's being offered for the 300 celebration. Thanks.
Thanks, Paula. Happy birthday, Northampton. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll get a two-for-one tonight. I'm actually pinch-hitting for Supervisor Moore, who couldn't be with us, so I'm going to start with his public works report. PennDOT awarded a contract to H&amp;K Group Incorporated in Blooming Glen, Pennsylvania, on July 21st of this year for $4.5 million to demolish and replace the Worthington Mill Bridge over the Neshamoney Creek. The new bridge will be widened to allow for two 11-foot travel lanes and two-foot shoulders on each side of the bridge. The construction is scheduled to begin on August 29th of this year for a 21-month construction period. An anticipated completion date would therefore be May 31st of 2024. The reconstruction of portions of Elm Avenue and the resurfacing of the entire road from Holland Road to Bustleton Pike is now complete. The improvements include base reconstruction and repair, installation of bottomless catch basins, and selecting widening. The 2022 micro-surfacing program is complete. The work included micro-surfacing on approximately 3.6 miles of the township road system. This program is designed to extend the life of roads that are currently in good condition for up to 10 years. Micro-surfacing applications allow the township to more effectively budget its road maintenance dollar toward our goal of improving 10 miles per year of our 180-mile system. And for my reports from the municipal authority, this is something that's gotten a lot of press, I think lately, across the county. For those who are unaware, the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority has agreed to an exclusive negotiating period with Aqua, Pennsylvania, to negotiate an agreement of sale for all Bucks County water and sewer, sanitary sewer system assets. Aqua has a current offer to purchase the wastewater system for $1.1 billion. The Northampton Bucks County Municipal Authority is one of the largest wholesale sanitary sewer customers of the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. The exclusive negotiating period is for a maximum duration of one year, but a decision to sell could be made at any time. In my discussions with the authority, they have unequivocally indicated that they are strongly objecting to this purchase, and although we don't have direct control over what happens going forward, I would say this is something everyone should be keeping an eye on. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for pointing out Barry. My apologies, I failed to mention in the beginning that Barry couldn't be here, and I sense his apologies. For me, just one quick report. You may have noticed, we did the official groundbreaking ceremonies for the two new fire stations. Although the station's construction had begun, it wasn't convenient to get the right day and have the ground surface proper so that we could actually have a ceremony. Once we were able to do that, we did that on Monday, had a lot of people come out from the public, so thanks for all the support on that. And again, thanks to Bill Wirt and his team, a lot of people to pull that together. It was a very, it was a very nice evening, I should say, not afternoon, and the rain held off, so that was good.
Yeah, Bob, I just wanted to mention real quick, Bob, residents talked to me about Aqua and how they're very upset, and they want nothing to do with it, and they're rooting for our municipal authority.
Especially being in Doylestown every day, as I am, for my full-time job, this is starting to spread, and I'm hearing a lot of displeasure as well, but I think it's something everyone should be aware of. Don't let it happen under your nose without at least having a say.
Got it. Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Paula. Managers report.
Nothing, nothing to report this evening.
Thanks, Bob. Assistant managers report. Bill?
Good evening. The newsletter should be hitting mailboxes. If you didn't get it already, it's coming, it should be any day now you should receive in it. That's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, Bill. Celestia's report. Joe?
I should report, and the minute should reflect that the Board of Supervisors met in executive session immediately prior to this evening's meeting for approximately one hour. Present for the executive session were the four members of the Board of Supervisors here on the dais, the township manager, the assistant township manager, the township engineer, and me. Three matters were discussed, one of ongoing litigation, two of potential litigation, and also involving real estate. No official action was taken during the executive session in regard to any of those matters, and no official action is required at this evening's supervisors' meeting as a result of that executive session. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Engineers report. Amanda?
No report tonight. Thanks.
Tonight, and we are to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? All right, that's okay. Thank you. All right. I'll call you up one, I'll call you up one at a time. Is there anybody else who wants to add their name before we get started? Okay, and first up is Alex Enton? Is that right? Thanks. And I'll ask you to say your name and address for the record. Wherever you're comfortable.
That's fine. All right. Alex Enton, Northampton Township.
What's your address?
Bristol Road, 211.
211 Bristol Road? Thank you.
All right. I'm here today because I was bringing up the topic of the Bucks County Water and Sewer, and what I wanted to find out is, do we, do you, as township supervisors, have any say in the matter of that sale? That would be my question number one. Two, at the meeting yesterday that they held at the Bucks County Community College, they kept trying to differentiate wholesalers' customers from retail customers. Now, if you could also explain to me, does that really matter? Like, for example, since we would be the wholesale customers as the Northampton Township, do we get to choose somebody else outside of Bucks County Water and Sewer, or if it becomes Aqua, if it's Aqua, can we choose somebody else in general? Because it seemed like, to my understanding, we couldn't, but yet they were trying to differentiate, oh, you don't have to worry about it because you're a wholesale customer. Well, my rates would still be going up, so I would think it would matter. Also, they said something that was really disturbing to me, and I couldn't really get an answer to it, so perhaps you guys may know the answer to this. They said that if they keep and don't sell the equipment, that they have a consent decree with EPA and the DOJ to make changes to the system. So does this system, how does the EPA connected to it, considering especially with the current case that Supreme Court just held with the EPA versus West Virginia? And also, how is DOJ connected into it in terms of water? Now, I have some other information that I don't want to really mention because I don't know if it's true or not, but I would be quite interested in finding out what that, what that result is, and how are they connected? And again, if you guys would share some of that, that would be greatly appreciated. I don't know when the next meeting of the Bucks County Water and Sewer is, and so that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enton. So I just want to start by saying, the really, the best, we're happy to hear about this, and Mr. Pellegrino will answer some of those questions if we know. If we don't have an answer, we'll just say we don't really know. But a really good place to also go is to the Bucks, the Northampton Bucks Municipal Authority water meetings. You know, go to those meetings there, they're at the, at the Authority Building, and we can, we can get to you the schedule, because that's really a good place to get questions answered about how they interact with the Bucks County Authority and what the relationships are. I'm not sure that we have all that information, but maybe Bob could answer just one of the questions. The question is, do we have say over the sale? Specifically, we do not. And then you asked about what is a wholesale customer, and maybe Bob can just describe that to you.
Sure. Our authority, which is a separate governmental agency, has an agreement with the county authority to wholesale sewer flows down to the Philadelphia Treatment Plant. So they pay Bucks County Water and Sewer, which owns the lines down to that plant, to allow our flow to go through those lines. That makes them a wholesale customer. The differentiation is that wholesale customers are ones that buy in bulk, as opposed to a retail customer where you're actually billing individual businesses or property owners. That's the difference. So we buy, we just pay for capacity in the sewer lines, our authority does, not the township. So they are strictly a wholesale customer. They, as you know, they bill you as a resident for your water and sewer services. The county does not, but they pay, they have contracts with the county for moving the sewage through their lines.
And our water authority, they have the relationship with the Bucks County Authority, not the Board of Supervisors, not the township here. Go ahead, if you want to just give a quick call. Sure.
So, does that mean that if, again, they were saying that you don't have to worry about it because you're a wholesale customer, but in reality, if they do go ahead with the sale, I would still be responsible for the higher cost, for example, if Aqua pushes it or not, because there's nobody else to choose from?
I think that, I think we could say with some confidence that if, if whoever owned that wholesale, those lines, were to raise the rates to Northampton, then Northampton would have to respond in some way to that. The water authority, not this board. I think that's what you're asking, and it's kind of the price going down the line.
Right.
Correct. Well, they, they don't have anyone else to choose from now. They have an agreement with Bucks County. If there's a sale, that agreement would have to be honored for whatever term it is, and I don't, I don't know how long it is. You'd have to talk to them. But there's a fixed price for that. I'm not sure if it escalates during the term of the contract, but once that contract expires, it's my belief that Aqua then, they have to negotiate now with, with the buyer, if it, if it goes through, to renegotiate a new deal. So that's where you might get an increase in your rate, because they're passing on an increase as a wholesale customer.
Can I ask, can I, just real quick, is this, is this sale going on within this next month, or is it longer than a month?
I don't think we know.
I don't think we really know.
Okay, because I would like if Tom Zuner could come here and give us a little presentation of what's going on, because he's going to know exactly what's going on. I mean, yeah, go to their meetings, but I think that we should have Tom here and also explain what's going on.
I think that's a good idea. We can invite Tom to come.
Yeah.
And just for everybody's information, the next meeting of the Northampton Bucks County Water and Sewer Municipal Authority is August 3rd at 6:30 PM, and that's at 8:15 Bustleton Pike. That's at the corner of Bustleton and Upper Holland. August 3rd, 6:30 PM. Thank you, Joe. Mary Strauss? Mary Strauss? No Mary? Mark Calhoun? All right, Mark, give your name and address for the official record.
Mark Calhoun, 9 Ronald Drive, Holland.
Thanks.
I've been a township resident since 1975. I volunteered many years with the Northampton Fire Department, first as an active firefighter, and then in the fire police unit, becoming the fire police chief one year. the fire police chief one year, and I was on the first fire rescue unit in the township. I served 11 years active duty with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, attaining the rank of major, and I currently am retired and serving as Vice President of the Johnsville Centrifuge and Science Museum. In 2017, we brought to the township a proposal to build a museum and STEM Resource Center, which was overwhelmingly enthusiastically and unanimously approved. The headlines read "An Amazing Win for Northampton Township" when in the newspaper. The necessary government contractual documents were vetted by the township solicitor and approval given by the Department of Interior National Park Service. Mr. Pellegrino even helped to craft those documents and walk them through the process. Mr. Moore, then the chairman, said, "This is going to be a great addition to the park. We're always looking for use for the 39 acres." By the way, that 39-acre tract has been under control of the township since 1998. What are you doing with it now? Kim Rose made comment in 2017, "I'm very excited for this. I've seen how hard you work. I'm so excited to get a science museum right here in Northampton. I'm very, very pleased." Then Kim, in April of this year, at our Titanic Gala, made an announcement to everyone in attendance, about 350-plus people, "You have all worked so hard to get to this point, and I'm so happy that this project is becoming a reality." Those comments were echoed by State Representative Wendy Thomas and Congressman Brian Fitzpatrick. After an encouraging address to everyone in attendance, he presented us a U.S. flag flown over the U.S. Capitol in honor of what we are doing for the community. Now we find ourselves thrown out. You have removed our sign on the corner of Bristol and Haplow Roads for no good cause or reason, a sign that an honored township resident, George Lang, helped erect. We have repeatedly requested conference with you to better understand what precipitated your harshness toward us, yet that has fallen on deaf ears. You have breached our contract with intent to extinguish our rights. Is this the way you thank honored township presidents? Is this the way you govern? All of you took an oath to support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and discharge your duties with fidelity. Mr. Pellegrino and Mr. Wirt worked very hard, along with the rest of the administration, to get this approved. Now it seems you are working extra hard to reverse your decision with no cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Lori, Laura, Lori, sorry.
My question was answered.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And so was Dan.
Dan?
I put it in case we had a question.
Okay, good.
And I just want to make a promise. Thanks, Paula, for listening to the community, too, and bringing that forward.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Michael McGuire, representing Johnsville Centrifuge and Science Museum at 31 East Elizabeth Lane, Richborough. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here. I'm here, some of my associates with the Johnsville Centrifuge and Science Museum. The news recently that we received, when Mr. Pellegrino sent us a letter, and also had previously announced at a meeting that you were no longer interested in continuing with our project, was very disappointing. There are a lot of people in this community who gave a lot of time, money, and effort. There was no prior warning. We had called a year ago, I called Mr. Wirt, to confirm rumors that the township was considering going in another direction. He assured me that that was just a rumor, that there was no truth to the matter. It's a lot of work in this, and this is, let's talk about the project, and this is really for the public. I'm not, you people, we've already corresponded, but the public doesn't know that you're canceling this memorial. The people of NEDC did a lot of hard work winning the Cold War for this country, and we established our organization to make tribute to them. And this Phase One of our project, which is what we had committed to build, was an exhibition building, a memorial to pay tribute to that hard work of people from our own community, from Richborough, you know, who even worked there. And so many people from this community have given time, money, and effort. I just don't understand this decision whatsoever. No cause was cited. We asked that a cause be identified. Our agreement says, yes, you may for any cause whatsoever, but you did not identify a cause. There is no cause. That's our conclusion. So we think in the removal of the sign prematurely, before the agreement was, I thought, unfair. We're being bullied. I call, you called me, Adam, you called me. I didn't call you. You called me and threatened that if I came and appeared at a public hearing a month or two ago, there'd be consequences. That was completely inappropriate.
That's not true.
That is true.
That is not true. You are misrepresenting our conversation. I'm not going to say anything more than that.
Fine. Nonetheless, we did not appear, and, but tonight, decided to come unannounced. Anyway, for the public, I think people out there and the people in the audience, to turn down a free, we're paying for this. The township isn't paying anything. We raised the money. We committed to raise $100,000 in five years. As of June 29th, the five-year anniversary, we raised over $165,000, despite us not getting the extension we requested. We met our commitment. There's no reason not to go forward with this, and I think the people of the township owe an explanation, and we would like, and we requested, a public hearing on the matter, as was held when this was originally approved, by a 5-0 unanimous vote, by the way. Was a vote taken to disestablish this agreement? I don't understand how you could disestablish something by administrative action when it was a vote. Isn't that law? So anyway, I think the people of the township, if you're concerned, you should raise your voices. This is completely inappropriate and a disrespect to the people who work at NEDC and contribute to this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. McGuire. We have no further public comment signed up, so with no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.